One of those unorthodox periods in time that nobody could have predicted anything. Some special things have gone into place, including a tax penalty amnesty program.
It is a program that will be lasting through December 17, and it allows any business, doing business within the city of Los Angeles, that should, whether they're registered or not, to essentially come clean and pay for any back taxes that they owe, including principal and interest. And in exchange, the city will waive all penalties associated with those delinquent accounts. During the time of a pandemic, when it's been really difficult for businesses that are struggling, to allow for an opportunity to reduce that burden on them. You can submit an application online, you can call us, contact us, and our tax and permit enforcement staff are happy to help.
Do you, at the Office of Finance, offer a payment program of any kind?
We do. So as part of the tax penalty amnesty program, we offer an installment plan.
Okay.
And so our billing unit would be able to structure a payment plan that works for both the taxpayer and also ensures that those taxes are collected before the end of the fiscal year.
Check out the best news bites from around town. It's time for City Beat.
L.A. City Attorney Mike Fuhr has announced a significant ruling in his ongoing lawsuits against three of the largest trucking companies that operate at the port of L.A. The lawsuits allege that hundreds of drivers are purposefully being classified as independent contractors and not employees in order to evade providing benefits, paying minimum wage and appropriate taxes, and covering operating costs. To read more about the litigation, visit lacityattorney.org. The northern San Fernando Valley is getting a new walk-up COVID-19 testing supersite. The San Fernando Recreation Park in San Fernando will operate from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Tuesday through Saturday, with up to 3,000 people per day getting tested. To register for testing, visit coronavirus.la. Having been closed for nearly eight months because of COVID-19, Skate Land Northridge, a mainstay for over 60 years, will soon transform into a 100-bed bridge housing center. The site will be operated by Hope of the Valley Rescue Mission, and the project is assisted by a $6 million loan from the city of Los Angeles. David and Mike Fleming, who own Skate Land, hope to open early next year for a few days, if it's safe, for a last skate for fans.
Turning Skate Land into Hope Land, a place where people who are homeless can come, they can find shelter, they can find case management, housing navigation, job skills onsite. We would also have access to mental health services.
I can't wait to share this story with you. As a dancer, I find these women so inspirational. We get to meet the Roletts and learn more about their work to empower young women with disabilities through dance and a sense of community. Enjoy. Choreographer Martha Graham said, "Dance is the hidden language of the soul." Our guests today know that all too well. I'm so delighted to be joined by members of the dance team, the Roletts, Connor Lundius and Katherine Elliott. So great to have you guys here. All right, straight off the bat, Dance Team the Roletts. What is it and what do you guys do?
We are a dance team made up of women with disabilities, women in wheelchairs, and our main mission is to empower other women and girls with disabilities to live boundlessly and shift perspective through dance.
Does it change how you feel about you and, you know, what you can and cannot do?
I think it's an indescribable feeling, for sure. And especially, even just when we're all together as a team, the seven of us, we share a bond and share experiences that the general population doesn't understand. So you feel tremendously like at ease and comfortable when you're around people who are just like you.
It's a bond like I've never experienced before, and it really gives me a sense of belonging.
We host quite a few events throughout the month virtually. We have virtual dance classes every week, as well as a virtual girls' night once a month. And you can find information about that on our website, info@rolettsdance.com. It's really incredible to just see that there are so many other women out there that share the similar mindset and just want to connect and make friends and share experiences. And we're reaching women from 10 different countries around the world, so it's incredible.
This week, we also got the pleasure of chatting with Susan Burton from A New Way of Life Reentry Project. Susan's story is truly what I love most about the soul of Los Angeles, someone who made an incredible change in her life and now uses the lessons she learned to give a helping hand to others. After years of heartache and tragedy and substance abuse, Susan Burton turned her life around, but that wasn't enough. She turned back around and extended her hand to women just like her to help them as well. And a new way of life was born. So wonderful to have you, Susan Burton, A New Way of Life founder. You were incarcerated six times due to things that you had done because of substance abuse, dealing with the pain that you were going through.
I feel my incarceration was the effects of our society, not being willing or able to deal with substance use, with the drug problems in our nation. It did become, for me, a sort of hopeless cycle of in and out, in and out, in and out, and asking for help, not knowing what type of help I needed. We have a kind, loving, comfortable environment for women to come to when they're released from prison, a place for them, a place for their children. But now we have social workers in place, we have a therapist on staff, we have attorneys to help them to get their children back, we have a legal department, we have leadership development, because I believe that when, what all that the women have been through, you go through that, you have some leadership skills. And so we support them to become leaders of their community, leaders of their household, leaders and use their voice for good, use their vote for good.
If someone wants to get more information?
Please, you can visit us at anewwayoflife.org.
In our feature story, Joe Buscayeno is a lifelong resident of Council District 15, and the vibe of the Port communities runs deep in his DNA. I got to sit down with the council member at Dodger Stadium to talk about his work for the community in the time of a pandemic. Councilman Joe Buscayeno, welcome to our show.
Thanks, Rasha. Look at us. Here we are.
What a dream, right?
Amazing. So much history.
You've had your own history here.
In 1992, the San Pedro High baseball team, which I was a part of, we played on this field and won the champion, the city championship.
This year, there's been so much that we've been through. So I want to talk about COVID first. It's something that's affected all of us across the Southland, and it continues to affect us. But your district already in April had rolled out some programs to help residents. Are those, could you tell us about those programs and if they're still in effect?
Of course. And I'm proud that in my district, our team had to come together and find a way to feed the most vulnerable, our seniors and disabled residents. We launched a food program that helped stimulate the economy by helping bring, helping support our small businesses, our restaurants. We fed 1,000 people every week for seven weeks in a row, four days a week. And it was important for us, again, to help our local restaurants and feed those who needed us the most. We also worked with the private sector and were able to bring in half a million dollars and provide grocery carts, and we distributed them throughout the district. But I'm also proud that we were the first to house 100 homeless individuals at the Sunrise Hotel in downtown San Pedro. It was what we know it today now as the project Room Key that allows homeless individuals to find shelter and a bed with wraparound services.
Well, I wanted to talk to you about the homeless issue here in Los Angeles. According to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, the city experienced a 14% increase in the city, but your district experienced a decrease. What do you feel contributed to that?
We saw a reduction in Council District 15, and we're thankful. We're thankful for the residents in my district who said yes to solutions. And I believe I was the first to have not one but three Bridge Home sites, Wilmington, San Pedro, and Watts, to move. They are now up and running. That's 300 souls that came from the sidewalks and into a Bridge Home Shelter.
It seems in your mission, too, you're very solution-oriented, so the Housing Solutions Action Plan. Talk to me about this plan. What are some of the components? How soon do you think this plan will be implemented?
Channel 35 is getting the exclusive on our plan, so we've been meeting with our--
We're hearing it here first.
We've been meeting with our neighborhood council representatives in all corners of my district. And the housing plan is just set. We've got to recognize the fact that city leaders, we are elected to take action, leading with urgency, as I've often said. So this action plan is recognizing the fact that we have already hundreds of permanent supportive housing units in my district, and we're advancing more. We have about 2,000 that are already in the pipeline or have already been built that we're proud of.
I have to say, though, before we end here, you are one of those few individuals, through the most difficult times, you are always smiling. And I think that just brings so much hope. I don't think I've ever been to an event, even in the most challenging times, you just bring this smile, which brings people hope, so thank you for that.
I appreciate that. Yeah, it's okay to smile. And, you know, as much I'm Italian, born and raised, and we have, we're emotional, we love the hug and kiss, so I'm sending a virtual hug and a kiss to all of the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure having you here. Looking for the latest thing to do this week? Well, we've got you covered with virtual things to do.
The Los Angeles County Museum of Art presents an exhibit by L.A.-based artist Alex Prager that satirizes a specific part of working life, the office holiday party. Created with sculptures, costumes, makeup, and props, experience these lifelike scenarios at LA CMA. Visit Alex Prager. Farewell, work holiday parties, now through January 3 at the Smith Welcome Plaza, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. Visit lacma.org for details. Meditation is known as a healthy modality, so join longtime meditator Doug Frankel as he discusses the positive effects of meditation, particularly during the stressful holiday season.
Even during normal circumstances, the holiday season can be really stressful. But, you know, this year, we of course have the added layer of stress with the COVID situation. So it's really important, I think, for people to take a few minutes every day if they can or whenever they can to just sit still and do some self-care.
Happening Saturday, December 5 at 11:00 a.m. Email woodln@lapl.org for the Zoom link. Want to play a part in the design of the remodel of the historic Vision Theater in La Mert Park? Now's your chance. The top three design finalists for the Vision Theater Main Stage Curtain Competition are selected, and it's time to vote for the winner. The Department of Cultural Affairs Performing Arts Program is hosting the competition, where the winner gets a $5,000 award. To vote, visit culturela.org. The voting concludes on December 7, so vote today. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
Well, that's it for this edition. I'm Rasha Goel. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. And don't forget, we're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Today is Tuesday, December 1. I'm Nuri Martinez, a president of the city council. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscayeno.
Here.
Sidio.
Present.
De Leon.
Here.
Harris Dawson.
Here.
Kuratz.
Present.
Krikorian. Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
Ofero.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez. Rue. Wesson. Eleven members present and accord, Madam President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes of November 25, 2020?
Mr. Buscayeno moves, and Mr. De Leon seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Price moves, and Mr. Bloomingfield seconds, next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday, and it's time for the flag salute.
Mr. Ofero, would you please seat us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
I'd be honored, Madam President. Thank you. All please rise. Place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please, let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Madam President, would council like all items to go forthwith today?
Without objection, that will be the order next.
Items 1 through 23 are items noticed for public hearing. Items 24 through 27 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 28 through 47 are items for which public hearings have not been held. For the record, a community impact statement has been submitted for item 30 after the council agenda was released. The MacArthur Park Neighborhood Council is for this proposal. Items 48 through 53 are items scheduled for closed session for which a public hearing has been held. And 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Members, if you want to call any items special, Mr. Buscayeno?
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning. Item 29 for comments.
Any others?
That's it. Thank you.
Members, any other items you wish to call special? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk--
Madam President, there's a request-- apologies, there is a request to hold item 27 on the desk.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do that. Okay, what available items are there for us to vote on?
Madam President, items available to vote on are 24 through 26 and-- and, um, and that is it for now.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on items 24 through 26. Please call the roll.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
It's... Yes, yes.
Kuratz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue. Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
14 ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, let's go ahead and take up the closed session items. Mr. Krikorian, would you like to speak to?
Okay, so guys, no one called...
Would you like to, Mr. Buscaino? You want to unmute yourself? Thank you. Mr. Krikorian, would you like to speak on items 48 through 53, our closed session items?
Thank you, Madam President. Budget and Finance has considered those items and recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. They're routine matters that can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Members, are there any questions on any of these items before we vote? These are the closed session items, items 48 through 53. You see, none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Madam President, if I may, I shall read the settlement amounts. Item 48, in the case entitled Francesca Pascucci versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $150,000 in settlement. Item 49, in the case entitled Monica Sliivar versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $165,000 in settlement. Item 50, in the case entitled Rosa Rodriguez versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $170,000 in settlement. Item 51, in the case entitled Sandra Talbert versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $200,000 in settlement. Item 52, in the case entitled Mary Maurer versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $125,000 in settlement. Finally, item 53, in the case entitled Tasha Counts versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $190,000 in settlement. And now, to call the roll. Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Aye.
De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Kuratz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue. Wesson.
Aye.
14 ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and move on to public comment. Go ahead and read the calling information, followed by the city attorney.
As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, and then press the pound key. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press *9 to speak. Finally, when the last four digits of your phone number is called, press *6. Again, call 669-254-5252, and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak. Finally, when you hear the last four digits of your phone number called, called out, press *6.
So, to members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and if you wish one minute for general public comment, please speak on the items before providing general public comment. We'll tell you when your time is up. Item 3 is a hearing to adopt ordinances regarding the proposed establishment of the City of Los Angeles Community Facilities District Number 11 Pontevia, and a proposed bond indebtedness for CFD Number 11. Therefore, Madam President, I recommend that we reopen the phone lines after this first public comment period for members of the public who wish to speak on item 3 only, and did not have an opportunity to speak on it during this first public speaking session. When we reopen the lines on item 3, it will be to speak on item 3, or, excuse me, when we reopen the lines the second time to speak on item 3, it will be for item 3 only, not any other items, and not general public comment. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're speaking on an agenda item, you'll get one brief warning from me or the president. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic or get straight off topic, the president will cut you off, and you'll forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. We'll take 35 minutes total of public comment. The items that are open for public comment are items 1 through 23 and 28 through 47. Finally, for members of the public calling to speak, as soon as you hear someone address you, either the last four digits of your phone number or other identifying information if you're calling in on a blocked number, then you are live in the council meeting. Please immediately press *6 to unmute yourself so you can tell us which items you want to speak on. So please keep one ear to the phone. We understand that you might be listening on another device. If you are, please turn down the volume on those other devices immediately so that we don't get feedback and we avoid the time delay problems between the live meeting and the broadcast. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take the first caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 5436, please press *6. Caller with the phone number ending in 5436, please press *6. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, my name is Zach, and I'd like to speak on all items and general public comment.
So you have three minutes to speak on items 1 through 23 or 28 through 47, followed by a minute for general public comment.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to start out with item number 27. This is another attempt by the city council to funnel more money to LAPD, as if their bloated $3 billion budget doesn't have enough funding. I have no idea why you guys need to shovel $200,000 to this build blue bridges propaganda campaign. This is just disgusting, in the face of every day, people call in the city council and tell you, "We want less funding for police and more funding for services." And here you are with an, oh, this is just a propaganda project. And it's gross, and we don't want it. I'll move on now to item 33. This is, of course, Joey Buckets being sadistic again. The CDC has been very clear about these sweeps. They're a terrible idea. They subject our unhoused neighbors to unnecessary exposure to COVID. They subject the sanitation workers to unnecessary risk of COVID exposure. Totally sadistic. I mean, look around at the city right now. Tens of thousands of unhoused neighbors, more on the way with the eviction crisis. And all Joey Buckets cares about is his NIMBY buddies don't have to see anybody on the street. This is just vile, sadistic, awful, and totally contrary to the science that we've been provided about these sweeps. I'll move on now to general public comments.
Okay, please begin.
I just want to say, once again, this neighborhood council, or this city council, excuse me, has shown that they have just totally mismanaged priorities. We're here again talking about torturing unhoused. Joey Buckets loves to punish the unhoused. And instead of seizing hotels, using eminent domain to find housing for these people, Joey Buckets and probably staffer B can't wait to punish these people, throw them in jail with the help of Bob Blumenfeld's sadistic motion. Get your priorities in check. We need these people in homes. We don't need them in jail. We don't need to, we don't need to steal all their stuff. We don't need to be violent. Just awful, awful priorities by this city council, once again, demonstrated every day on these agendas. Get it together, guys. We need housing. We need service, not sweeps. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker. Next, next speaker?
Caller with the phone number ending in 6101, please press *6. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Stevie. I'm a member of the Los Angeles Tenants Union, and I'm calling to speak on general public comment, as well as on items 27 and 33.
So you have two minutes for the item speaker, followed by a minute for general public comment.
Great. So I just want to echo what was just said regarding item, well, I'll start with 27. The tenant anti-harassment draft ordinance. I myself am someone who lost a job due to COVID in March, and was harassed by my landlord with threats of arrest and lawsuits. Ended up having to self-evict. We know that this eviction moratorium has never really actually been a moratorium. As a tenants' union member, we see evictions happening every day, illegal lockouts, landlords that are cutting off utilities. We absolutely need more protections than this inept city council has given to tenants, which brings me, and I know this is a little out of order, but to my general public comment, which is to cancel rent. We likely wouldn't have landlords harassing people's safety, housing, which is healthcare, their general well-being, illegally lacking people out, threatening them with arrest and lawsuit, if we would actually have something meaningful done at the city level to protect these people who do not have jobs and have no meaningful way to pay their rent at all. So, once again, I've been calling since April and will continue to call. We need to cancel rent and mortgages. And regarding item 33, I echo everything the previous caller said. Sweeps are violence. We need house keys, not handcuffs. It is absolutely unconscionable to take the most vulnerable among us in the middle of a raging pandemic that Los Angeles has done nothing to get under control, and do exactly the opposite of what the CDC says we need to be doing. We are not only further subjecting people to a deadly respiratory virus, but we are also stealing all of their belongings. I invite any member of city council to actually come out to one of these very violent sweeps. Joe is nothing more than a cop, and again, as was already said, wants to hide Los Angeles's failures. We have 67,000 people experiencing homeless. That's homelessness. That's not because 67,000 people are irresponsible. That's because our city is a failure. Pushing people into different corners, down different streets is not an answer. Stealing their belongings is not an answer. We need housing. We need services, not sweeps. I yield my time.
Next speaker?
Caller with the phone number ending in 6311, please press *6.
Good morning.
Please state your name and the...
Yes, I would like...
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Alix Swanson, President and CEO, San Pedro Chamber of Commerce, speaking on item 33 and general comment.
So you have one minute for each. Please begin with item 33. Thank you.
Yes, the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce is in strong support of item 33 on the agenda today to resume care plus cleanup in three locations in Council District 15. Our chamber has been deeply involved in helping to craft real solutions for our unhoused neighbors in San Pedro. We have supported two shelters, one city, one county, a project room key in our downtown, and our chamber, in collaboration with area nonprofits, has raised over $120,000 to provide grants to unsheltered residents in need. Now we ask for your help, city council members. The actions described in item 33 are necessary for the health and safety of the unhoused individuals in the encampment and the surrounding communities dealing with the impact of these large encampments. I urge you to support item 33 today and support Councilmember Buscaino for the good work he is doing in our community. Thank you for your time.
Do you want your minute of general public comment, Speaker? Apparently she's hung up, so, next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 9917, please press *6. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Items 30, 33, 37, and general public comment.
Followed by a minute for general public comment, Speaker. Please go ahead.
Item 30 is a donation to improve a memorial to fallen officers. I think it'd be more appropriate in this time to to remove that memorial and create a memorial to fallen citizens in the city of Los Angeles. It'd be the first time any of you on the council would acknowledge people like Daniel Fernandez, who was gone down by the LA Police Detective Lee's director's daughter. So, no need for propaganda, which is also on the agenda. And item 37, $200,000 to promote propaganda, taking money from, reach from the top LA, with hosts a community fridge here in Los Angeles, and does addiction treatment services, but we need to take money from them for cops. And the other money is coming from a program that Herb Wesson champions about making sure that we don't, you know, add to the technological waste and refurbish the electronics that we have in the city. So Herb Wesson, I would hope that you would support propaganda, taking money from something that you champion in the city. Item 33 is, of course, Joe Buscaino moving to resume sweeps, even though recent, very recent evidence has shown in this pandemic, in this surge, even though, I wouldn't really call it a surge because we never really brought down the rates. Everything has just been surging upward and upward and upward. And in that, we have people going out to do sweeps who are spreading COVID to our unhoused community and amongst each other. So I don't see how it's safe at all to resume these sweeps when they are a known sector of infection in our community. And also, they're just completely heartless, and they go against everything the city has been moving towards. From a judge, not because you guys have, you know, goodness in your hearts, because a judge has to tell you what to do. But a judge wants housing for these people. He says, "Where's the housing? Where's the housing?" And Joe Buscaino says, "They don't need houses. That's what we have jails for." Fuck you, both Joe Buscaino, fuck you, go to hell, bring in hell and die. That's not how we treat homeless people in the city. General public comment. Marquis Harris Dawson, you useless piece of shit. I cannot wait to cast a vote to recall you. Downtown Crenshaw Rising, and people like Damian Goodman, who would probably do a way better job as a council member than you, need your support, and you will remain silent because you're a fucking sellout and a useless piece of shit. Mary Martinez, you start every single meeting late. You don't wear a mask. In Pacoima, the COVID rates were higher than anywhere in the city, and yet you have shown no leadership on the virus. You have shown no outreach to your community. You have failed on every single level as a leader when it comes to COVID. And so you sit there in council chambers without a mask on while people in your district are the ones who suffer the worst from this virus. So fuck you for being a piece of shit. And in that regard, I would hope that every council member here realizes that Mary Martinez is leading them down pretty much...
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you very much.
Fuck you, Mary.
Thank you very much.
What an idiot.
Fuck you. Fuck you.
You hear that? Fucking idiot.
I'm just trying to just gather my thoughts about a gentleman referring to a woman in that way. Why don't we go ahead and take the next speaker?
Caller with the phone number ending in 9799, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is George. I'd like to speak on 33 and general comment.
Sure. So you have a minute for each. Please begin with item 33.
Is it, can I just lump them together?
Go ahead.
All right. Good morning, council members. I'm reaching out to you this morning on behalf of my community in favor of resuming the comprehensive care cleanups in Council District 15. I can't even begin to emphasize how important these encampment cleanups are. I've been involved in helping clean encampments in the past and slowly backed off as the city stepped up. We would come across weapons, drugs, stolen property, et cetera. Although it may not seem like the politically correct thing to do this day and age, when everyone wants to be seen as a compassionate and caring individual and not the disciplinarian, there has to be a balance. That balance is clearly non-existent in some parts of our city. Sadly, it has now spread onto our schools shut down by the pandemic. Not only do I live in CD 15, but I walk in and around the entire city of Los Angeles. A very recent project I worked on had me visiting every school in the Los Angeles Unified School District. The growing encampments are now attaching their tarps to the chain link fencing of these schools. The visible trash piles is one thing, but the smell is a completely different animal. I can only imagine what could be causing those odors. Ignoring this issue and allowing the problem to grow will help nobody, not those of us who have concerns with these encampments, nor the ones who are existing inside of them. They will continue and grow, and the problem, as you are all aware of, will be more and more difficult to remedy. I'm respectfully requesting that you come to a decision that benefits the health and safety of our communities. We are counting on you to do the right thing here. When we start helping the homeless the right way and stop enabling the transients and vagrants that continue to decimate our communities is when we will finally start seeing forward progress. Until then, nothing will change, and our pleas will seem to continue to fall on deaf ears. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the, caller with the phone number ending in 6719, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Emily, and I would like to speak on number 33 and public comment.
You have a minute for each. Please begin.
Thank you. My name's Emily. I'm a resident of San Pedro in City Council District 15, and over the past few years, I've worked weekly with homeless youth living in shelters while I was going to school in Washington, D.C. I'm calling in support of reinstating the Care Plus program so that people experiencing homelessness in my town can have access to COVID testing, portable showers, trash receptacles, and biohazard cleanup, all of which is part of the CARE program. Publicly available restrooms have become very scarce during this pandemic, and increasing access to such facilities protects the health and dignity of people who are vulnerable due to lack of shelter from both the cooler temperatures and the spread of coronavirus. When the city does not provide sanitation and outreach services, it negatively impacts all the members of the community, both housed and unhoused. I ask the city to lead with compassion in reinstating the Care Plus program to make sure individuals can hold on to the belongings they need to get through the winter while also providing the cleanliness and access to portable restrooms and COVID testing that will benefit the entire community. I believe the CARE program is capable of striking this balance and is much needed after many unhoused people have been struggling throughout this pandemic with no help. In my experience, access to showers, toilets, and sanitary conditions are some of the major differentiators in creating a positive outcome for individuals and families who find themselves facing the harsh realities of homelessness. This is exactly what the CARE program is designed to provide, and what is needed is consistent compassionate implementation in all areas where there is need. The areas of San Pedro that are proposed are indisputably have dire need for services, so I encourage the council to please support this. Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1108, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Daniel Gus, all items and general public comment, please.
Sure. So you have three minutes for the items open for public comment, followed by one minute for general public comment. Please begin, Mr. Gus.
Great, thank you. Sure, thank you. I'm starting my clock. Okay, council members, item number 30, very interesting. We absolutely need to do more to memorialize our fallen officers, but I would like for you to have greater clarity here. What is it that you're giving that is worth $600,000? If it's non-monetary, you should be explicit and just be transparent. It's a good idea to honor the fallen officers and tell us what is it that you're giving that's non-monetary, that non-monetary, that is worth $600,000? If it's monetary, you shouldn't be doing it in a time of austerity. But I'll tell you what you can be doing, council members. How about on the anniversary of every fallen officer's death, you say, on this date in 1966, we lost this officer and this officer. On August 29th and 30th, 1966, you didn't lose one officer, you didn't lose two, you didn't, you lost three. Two in a helicopter crash and one in a car accident. How about next August 29th and 30th, you say, on this date in 1966, we lost these officers? That would be meaningful, not just a memorial, but your voice. Number 31, tree planting and maintenance services. Right now, you're really spending up to $15,405,000 on tree planting and maintenance services when you're cutting people's salaries? I mean, that's, that's, that's really bad. That's, that's a bad, that's a bad deal. Item number 33, I'm actually in favor of it, but as some of the callers said, it looks like it's being used for ulterior motives to hurt homeless people without giving them a place to go. I'm in favor of cleaning up, but you got to give them a place to go. It's a good idea, Mr. Buscagno, but it shouldn't be used in retaliatory form. Same thing, actually, number 34 I like, graffiti and weed abatement. How come it's only getting $65,000? That is something that should have more money. That is baseline municipal services. Kudos to you, John Lee, for that. But number 40 is the biggest middle finger to the city on today's agenda. This is Herb Weston's last money grab. $80,000 that was approved for something not related to office salaries, now being transferred to office salaries two and a half weeks before he goes off into retirement? Council members, if you transfer this money that is intended for something else so it can go into the pockets of Weston, his son, and the staffers, when you're cutting other people's salaries, I'm going to provide a list of who approved this F you, and we will keep pounding that drum every time that you squander money. That is absolutely, number 40, something you should not be doing. It's Herb Weston's last middle finger, his last ATM withdrawal for him, for his family, and the staffers, who, by the way, I'm sure are very nice people, but you should not be using that money for this purpose because that's not what it's intended for. Onto my general public comment. Council members, we now have tens of thousands of restaurants who can't even serve a sandwich or salad on the sidewalk due to Sheila Kuehl, who on the same day that she voted to shut down our restaurants and send our owners into bankruptcy and their employees onto the sidewalk, she was caught in the news dining on the sidewalk the same day at Il Fornio in Santa Monica. How come you guys don't pick up the phone and say, hey, Sheila? You're hurting tens of thousands of our constituents, tens of thousands of them, on the same day that you're dining on the sidewalk? Come on, Ms. Martinez, show leadership here. Don't complain about the criticisms from the callers. Pick up the phone, please. Call Sheila Kuehl and say, we want out of that because you're dining out on the sidewalk while you're sending our sidewalk employees at the restaurants and the owners into bankruptcy. Come on, people, have better form.
Thank you, Mr. Gus.
Caller with the phone number ending in 6389, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Pachuka, and I would like to speak about Agenda Item Number 33.
Sure, you have a minute. Please go ahead.
I'm calling in and expressing my support to resume the comprehensive Care Plus cleanups at the three locations in CD 15. I'm an owner of a clothing store in downtown Wilmington, California, and I want to talk about the homeless issue and the lack of cleanups by the city due to the emergency declaration that has negatively impacted my already suffering business due to the pandemic. Outside my business, I have found pieces, needles, dirty clothes, and have to keep my business doors closed to avoid my customers being harassed by homeless women and men trying to disturb my merchandise. Keeping my customers safe is already, is really important, and nevertheless, having the boulevard smell and look dirty is not helping the small businesses on the boulevard during these struggling times. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 0899, please press star six.
Hi, this is Stacy Dawson Sterns, and I'd like to speak on 27, 33, 36, 37, general public comment, please.
So you have three minutes for the items, followed by one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Item 27, you, you're not talking about it, but yes, please implement a citywide tenant anti-harassment program, and while you're at it, just cancel rent. Item 33, please reject Joe Buscagno's motion to resume Care Plus cleanups. Care Plus is the opposite of its name. Once again, we have an example of a heinous thing being packaged for the public as something good, but it's not. Sweeps are city-sanctioned acts of extreme violence upon our most vulnerable Angelenos. And if you all can continue to sit on this council and absolve yourselves of any sense of responsibility for the welfare of your unhoused constituents, then you should simply resign, and given your track records, that would mean most of you. Also, I need to point out that folks calling in with the bucket script are spreading misinformation. Sweeps were initially suspended due to COVID. COVID numbers are worse now that they were then, so there's no logic in resuming them. There have been recent cases of COVID outbreaks among city employees who sweep encampments. So sweeps pose an even greater risk than before, both to unhoused and housed community. All right, council members, listen. Don't be distracted by the passionate anger that Joe Buscagno demonstrates whenever he speaks of the unhoused. His emotion is masking a very clear agenda that could only be described as social Darwinism. And I wish to remind you that social Darwinism was a guiding principle of the Nazi regime. So when you support his motions, you need to recognize that the pattern of dehumanization in his initiatives is guided by a belief system that looks a lot like white supremacy. And you all need to decide if you're cool with aligning yourselves with that. Joey Buckets may have bullied the basic humanity out of a few of you, but there's still time to reclaim it and oppose this and his continuous attempts to criminalize poverty and homelessness. Thank you. Item 36, this is a swan song for Rue who should not be pushing this lacma bullshit. He just needs to walk away. He's trying to make good on donor promises, let Niffy sort it out. And on the other hail mary attempt from Weston, item 37, okay, the motion to give 200K to Queen James Entertainment, run by Daphne Bradford, popped into the council files on Wednesday, November 24th. It wasn't on the agenda, okay? So with the LAPD at an all-time low in public ratings, you're literally trying to funnel more cash into a program to rebuild trust between youths and cops? How about skip the cops part, just fund some programs for youth, defund the police? We don't want to invest more funds in cops to show up with backtacks for kids who they will later criminalize or murder, okay? So it looks like a last-minute fund blitz. Let's just, just cut it out, please. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 7719, please press star six.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn calling from Studio City, and I will take some time on the items as well as the general public comment.
So you have three, three minutes for the items that are available for public comment, followed by one minute for general public comment. Please begin, Mr. Previn.
Thank you. Good work at stacking up a bunch of lighting districts. I think this is what the public wants to be invited to comment on. And I'll, I'll chime in with some of the earlier speakers who were talking about, you know, what do you do here with a $200,000 propaganda investment made by Herb Weston as he exits to a group that's going to try to lubricate the relationship between the public and the LAPD? I have to be honest, I, I think that it is important to have a better relationship with the police, but to spend that kind of money in that kind of way is like putting a Band-Aid on a severed arm. We really, we really have to do a little bit more of a structural change than that kind of thing, and so it seems like a, a poor, a poor use of money. I want to also direct your attention to, there was an article in the New Yorker magazine coming up in December 7th, actually, by Francesca Mare about people who are being paid to occupy homes that are being, you know, ready for sale so that they stay safe, often in African-American neighborhoods and places where gentrification is happening. It's a very interesting article, and it's painful to understand that what I think the city is getting wrong these days is we have embraced the idea that the real estate industry and the private equity firms that bought up homes out of the real estate, out of the foreclosure debacle that preceded the pandemic debacle are the answer. And so you see guys like Gil Sadio refusing to ever say no to a developer, and I assume Daily Own will be the same. They're all just looking to build our way out of this crisis, and that somehow will miraculously help heal the people who are in the streets in squalor. It's not true. It's not, it's not going to work. We have to not pander to those groups over and over again. Today, Raymond Chan, or yesterday, is a guy who worked for the mayor and was LADBS. This is a guy who gets stuff done in City Hall. He, I remember the meeting when you used to meet in public openly where he was being praised for one of his, you know, promotions, I mean, through the city's system. This was an opportunity for Bloomingfield to jump up in glee. Everybody was pushing to say something nice about Raymond Chan. Now, unfortunately, he is facing an indictment, or maybe he's been indicted, I won't get the language right. We have staffer C and D added to the mix.
Mr. Previn, do you want to go on to your general public comment, or do you want to talk about the items?
Well, I'm talking about, right now, I'm talking about the homeless crisis, which is related to, you know, many of the items. What do you want me to do? You want me to go to general public comment, or you want me to finish my remarks? You're interrupting me. Very hard for me to get back on point.
Actually, you're on general public comment right now. Please begin.
All right, I'll begin my general public comment. Thank you, Fabel. And I know you're, you're at a very hard time because when I speak about your leadership in such truthful terms, it's painful. So I understand that you need to interrupt. But let me simply say that the Catherine Walker matter that was resolved at the last meeting, we agreed, the city council agreed to take the city attorney's recommendation. I asked you, Fabel, and the city attorney, Fuhr, what is the city attorney's recommendation so we can know, because you voted on it. And you said, oh, it's a secret because we haven't taken any final action yet. Well, once you take a final action, it's going to be too late for the public to give any meaningful comment. So I look forward to seeing you in court on that one day. It's just very hard. It's very hard to agree to this backroom dealing when the Judge Carter situation has resulted in more gridlock and confusion. I just, I, I don't envy the newly elected, and I look forward to a quick cleaning up of the mess so that we can get back to, you know, kind of a, a better time.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
When the city is there to serve the people, not to penalize them over and over again. With that, have a great day.
Caller with the phone number ending in 4208, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yeah, this is Rob Quan. I'd like to speak on item 1, 33, 37, 44, 40, and general public comment.
Sure. So you have three minutes for the items, Mr. Quan, followed by one minute for general public comment.
Yeah, for item number one, I just think it's kind of cruel that in the midst of a pandemic, a health crisis, where because of a financial situation and your refusal to cover LAPD's budget, increasing fees for advanced life support and basic life support by 69%. It's just sad. For item 33, Joey Buckets, this cruelty, I, I think we all have to wonder, what's happening here? Why, why is the council president scheduling? I think we all have to wonder, what's happening here? Why is the council president scheduling all of these shitty motions right now for Joey Bucket? It probably has something to do with her lining things up or maintaining her reign as council president so she can continue that, or potentially step up over into the mayor's office. You know, it's just absolutely pathetic. For Item Thirty-seven, building bridges, $200,000. Let's look at our auditor's office, our controller's office. They are missing an investigator position. That position's been held out there. Our ethics commission, which badly needs resources, but instead, we're going to spend $200,000 on building bridges. Remind you that yesterday, U.S. Attorney Hannah said that the detailed indictment, quote, "lays bare these backroom deals and should prompt a serious discussion as to whether significant reforms are warranted in the city of L.A." Council president's missing in action on that. For Item Forty, we're seeing, as Mr. Gus said, a transfer from, you know, for money from a fund to CD-ten salary. Are these backdoor bonuses to help out, you know, staffers who are volunteering on a failed campaign? I don't know. It's kind of weird that our controller's office is unable to actually monitor the spending that happens by our council offices. So, you know, who knows? Item Forty-four, I think we have a street then item, you know, I just wonder always when we're going to have decent translation services on this council. There have been a number of commenters who've called in over this last year and not had their comment translated. And I think it's just kind of bizarre that our council president can't step up there. I've watched budget and finance committee meetings where comment was delivered in Spanish, and Paul Krikorian translated it himself. Where's our council president? And on that note, I think it's noteworthy that the settlement amounts in these close-session items are so low. I mean, who knows? We're not privy to the exact details. But, you know, these trip-and-fall kind of things were the sort of lawsuits that were getting settled for one to five million dollars a year ago, and all of a sudden, now we're in the, you know, hundred, $200,000 range. For my general public comment, I like the new mask, Council President Martinez. I'd like it a whole lot better if you were wearing it. But honestly, I do have to apologize for giving you such a hard time about that. I mean, maybe this is an action out of solidarity with LAPD. Maybe you volunteered for vaccination earlier in this year, and you're actually quite heroic, who knows? Maybe you just had a previous infection that you never disclosed to anybody, and you wanted to keep that quiet. I don't know. But I think we do need to get you a vaccination ASAP if none of the above are true, because it's just unacceptable where you'd be parading around without a mask. One last note, I think it's noteworthy that, you know, we're a month and a half into Kevin Deleon's time on council, and he still hasn't been assigned the committee chair. Again, like the above, I think it's noteworthy because the council president's probably holding that over him and trying to, you know, promise certain chair positions while, you know, keeping other council members in the dark about what chair positions are being offered up. This kind of gamesmanship is what the charter's supposed to stop, but our council president refuses to follow the charter. And as long as the city attorney and the rest of the council refuse to do anything, we'll just have this.
Thank you. Okay, all members, we're going to go ahead and vote on the following items. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on Item One, Items Two through Four. I'm sorry. Item One, Item Two, Items Four through Twenty-three, Items Twenty-eight, Items Thirty through Thirty-two, and Items Thirty-four through Forty-seven. Can I just prepare to vote on these items? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Deleon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Kuratz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez. Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Weston.
Aye.
Fifteen ayes. These items are adopted.
Can I just go ahead and move on to Item Thirty-three? Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on that item. Please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, no.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Deleon. Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Kuratz. Krikorian.
Proves.
Kuratz, aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Kuratz. Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
No.
Weston.
Aye.
Going back to Councilmember Deleon.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, two noes. The item is adopted.
Can I just move on to Items Twenty, Item Twenty-nine? This was called special by Mr. Buscaino for comments.
Thank you, Madam President. LeVite has a couple images we'd like to put up on Item Twenty-nine. Last year, colleagues, I introduced a motion requesting a report back on how we can ensure that all restrooms in the city be equipped with diaper-changing stations, all men, women, and gender-neutral restrooms. I was motivated by the viral image of a dad changing his toddler's diaper on the floor of a bathroom stall, which you all see on your screen here. I just wanted to take a moment to highlight the reports drafted by the Department of Recreation and Parks in this council file, since we didn't get the opportunity to have a robust discussion and committee. Most importantly, I wanted to thank the staff of Department of Recreation and Parks for running with our idea and in many ways already being ahead of us. In the reports, you'll see detailed plans for the installation of diaper-changing stations in as many eligible restrooms as possible throughout the city. We're lucky to have many of these improvements funded by grants. You'll see on the screen the department produced a report for each council district, which contains detailed maps of diaper-changing stations and where future stations will go. Geographic equity was also very important to the department. These maps took a long, hard work to develop, and I just wanted to make sure that you are all aware of them. And I speak for all of us when I say that gender equality is of utmost importance to this council. I think that sometimes in a progressive city like Los Angeles, we convince ourselves that we're, we've achieved perfection in this area, or at least that we're already ahead of the game. However, I look around and I see infrastructure that is still stuck in a different era. As many of you know, I'm a father of two. I have been in the situation of the dad in the photo, like many of you, and I have had to get creative when changing my kids' diapers, and we do what we do have to do as parents. Fathers, also as a recreation assistant working at McDonald's Park here when I was going through college, I witnessed firsthand some of the dads that had to be creative and change his kids' diapers outside a restroom. But fathers continue to be more involved with childcare than ever before, spending triple the amount of time caring for their kids that they were in the 1960s. Our infrastructure simply must keep up because the lack of it needs to, one of two common outcomes. Either fathers have to get creative or pass on childcare responsibilities to their female partners who have access to diaper-changing stations in their restrooms. But if a father is out, one of our city recreation and parks facilities, without a female companion, he must use all kinds of juggling techniques in order to keep the child separated from unsanitary surfaces. It's unsafe, uncomfortable, unclean, unfair, and it's high time that we make some changes. So I want to recognize and congratulate the Department of Recreation and Parks for their hard work on these efforts, also encourage them to continue until every restroom in our city park facilities has a diaper-changing station regardless of gender. So with that, I ask for your aye vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Let's prepare to vote on this item, Item Twenty-nine. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
Deleon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Kuratz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Weston.
Aye.
Fifteen ayes. This item is adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move on to Item Twenty-seven. There's been a request by Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Price to recuse themselves from this item, so let's please take them off the board. Please remove Mr. Price off the board, please. Thank you. Mr. Rue? Mr. Rue, do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to see if there was a discussion. I wanted to make a quick statement.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I was wondering if there's going to be a discussion. I wanted to make a quick statement, if there was.
No, there wasn't. There was just a request by both members to recuse themselves on this item.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on Item Twenty-seven. Can you confirm that Mr. Price and Mr. Krikorian are off the board? Thank you. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Deleon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Kuratz.
Aye.
Krikorian recused. Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Apologize. Yes.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price recused. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Rue, yes.
Weston.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes. This item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to Item Number Three. Mr. City Attorney, we have to prepare a public hearing for this item.
Yes. Let's have the clerk read the call-in information briefly one more time, and then I'll explain the speaking rules on Item Three.
Yes. Real quick, the public hearing is now closed for Items Sixteen through Twenty-two. The tabulation of ballots shall take place for, in space three hundred of 555 Ramirez Street tomorrow, Wednesday, December second, at ten a.m. To access the live stream, join Zoom meeting ID number nine five three eight six two eight four three nine three, pass code PROP218. The ballot tabulation results will be announced on Tuesday, January nineteenth, for 2021, and that is the announcement for street lighting items. For Item Number Three, as indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment on Item Number Three only should call six six nine two five four two five five two five two. Again, six six nine two five four five two five two, and use meeting ID number one six zero five three five eight four six six, then press the pound key. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Finally, when you hear the last four digits of your phone number called out, press star six. Repeat. Six six nine two five four five two five two. Use meeting ID number one six zero five three five eight four six six, and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once submitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. And finally, when you hear the last four digits of your phone number called out, press star six.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So we're going to open the lines for comment on Item Three only. So that's regarding the adoption of ordinances for the proposed establishment of the City of Los Angeles Community Facilities District Number Eleven, Ponte Vista, and the proposed bond indebtedness for CFD Number Eleven. So this will be an opportunity for members of the public who did not already get an opportunity to speak on the item to speak on Item Three only, not any other items, and not general public comment. So why don't we open the phone lines and see if there's anybody who wants to speak on that?
Caller with the phone number ending in six two five zero, please press star six.
Hello.
Please state your name and speak on Item Three.
My name is George Matthews from San Pedro CPR Cleanup Crew, and I'd like to talk on Proposition Thirty-three and general opinion.
Sir, we're not on that item. We're item, this is a public hearing for Item Number Three, and Item Number Three only.
Oh, well, when do they go back to Number Thirty-three?
That's been voted on already, sir.
So let's move on to the next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in one one four eight, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in one one four eight, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on Item Number Three.
Item Number Three, all I have to say is all glory and honor to the Armenian people for the invasion and the atrocities they're undergoing by Azerbaijan.
Okay, so that's not Item Three, so let's move on to the next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in six zero six eight, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on Item Number Three.
Yeah, this is Richie Sodjanko from People's City Council. I just want, yeah, on Item Number Three, I want to say, fuck Joe Buscaino, your neighbors tried to jump us in your neighborhood.
Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in nine nine one seven, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on Item Number Three.
Regarding to Item Number Three, I heard Joe Buscaino call me an idiot on the hot mic.
Thank you so much. We need to speak on Item Number Three. Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in six five two three, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on Item Number Three.
Hi, my name is Serena, and those crazy commentators. I just want to say, first of all, you guys had a great Thanksgiving, and shame on Kevin Deleon for voting to criminalize homelessness.
Can you speak on Item Number Three, please?
Hello, Serena. People are being evicted on Thanksgiving night.
Caller with the phone number ending in five two zero six, please press star six.
Hello, my name is John Smith, and I was on the line previously to testify for one of one of the other motions, but I was cut off, and another person whom I texted was, the same thing happened. So maybe for those of us that were cut off and were able to get back in, could you repeat how the vote ended up on item number 33?
Sir, you need to speak to item number three.
I know, but how did 33, uh, end up? I, just for information, because we've both got cut off by some type of...
We voted on that item already. Thank you, caller.
So for the record, the vote on 33 was 13 to 2, but we're on item number three only now. So let's see if there's any speaker who wants to speak on item three only.
Caller with the phone number ending in 8408, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number three.
Yeah, hi, my name is Peter. Um, yeah, I'm hoping that, you know, when it comes to item three, um, and specifically item three, that you guys show a little bit more thoughtfulness than you did earlier voting on item 33, which was shameful. But on item three, I really want you guys to think about what you're doing, and don't do stupid things like allowing people to be evicted in Elsorino over Thanksgiving, like Kevin De Leon and putting out crap.
Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 6068, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 6068, please state your name and speak on item number three.
Yeah, I just want to say Joe Buscano should have shared for reviewing...
I think that's the fourth time that caller's called in.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1450, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 1450, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number three.
Hi, my name is Jaquele Cardona. I am with ACE, and I approve of the anti-harassment law.
So I'm gonna repeat once more. This is for item number three only, which is the Communities Facilities District Number 11, Ponte Vista, and the related bond indebtedness. Please don't call if you're gonna talk on anything else. We want people who are actually interested in this item to be able to get through. Do we have another speaker?
Caller with the phone number ending in 1006, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number three.
Fuck Joey Buck.
Okay, goodbye.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1403, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 1403, please press star six.
Good morning, you fat cunt! Item number three, general public comment, please!
Do you want to speak on item three, Speaker?
Yes, of course I do!
Begin, you have a minute.
Yeah, item three, appointy Ponte Vista. I'm against this budget. There's gonna be too many people going over there sucking cock in that park if you approve this. We don't want...
Mr. Speaker, I don't think you're on topic.
Fuck Joe!
Caller with the phone number ending in 9632, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number three.
Item number three. Fuck Mary, fuck Joe Buscano!
Goodbye. Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 8187, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 8178, please press star six. Please state your name.
Hi, yeah, my, hi, this is Sophie Strauss. I'd love to speak on item number three.
Go ahead.
Yeah, regarding the public hearing on the formation of communities facilities in District Number 11, um, and I know that you guys are looking at the file from the Community Facilities District report, and I'm just wondering if Kevin De Leon is gonna be able to sleep at night knowing that he voted for 33 when he could pay much service.
Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 7719, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number three.
Thank you. Eric Previn calling from Studio City, and I've been learning about this...
Mr. Previn, you already had an opportunity to speak on this item. This is for people who did not have an opportunity. So we're gonna move on if there's anybody still on the line.
What are you talking about?
Okay, there are no more speakers on this item, so we're gonna go ahead and close public comment on item number three. Anything else you wish to add, Mr. City Attorney, before we vote on this item?
If there's any interested person who wishes to file a written protest that will not be presented by the author, um, please file it with the clerk immediately. Um, and I believe, uh, I don't believe we have any interested parties on the line who want to speak on this, so I think we're good.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscano.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Coretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Yes.
Wesson.
Aye.
And going back to Councilmember Price.
Okay, good. Thank you, Loma. Aye.
Thank you. Fifteen ayes. This item is adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, what's next?
The clerk has one verbal motion to read into the record.
Go, go, go ahead.
This verbal motion is referred to the Ad hoc COVID Committee. It has been introduced by Councilmember Coretts, and the moves to direct the Emergency Management Department to work with the LA County Department of Health and report back immediately on an emergency implementation plan to manage the possible shortage of hospital beds, medical professionals, and personal protective equipment due to the ongoing COVID-19 spike. And a seconder?
Sir, a second on this motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you.
Members, are there any verbal motions you'd like to introduce? Okay, seeing none. What's next, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral?
Posting and referred. Members, are there any announcements? Are there any announcements, members? Ms. Rodriguez, do you have an announcement?
Madam President, yes, I have an announcement.
Oh, hold on for just a second. I saw Ms. Rodriguez.
I have, I have an adjourning motion, so...
Okay, thank you. Announcements, Mr. O'Farrell?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much, Madam President. Uh, it is an honor today to recognize Turner Classic Movies, TCM, and their Women Make Film series as we declare today, December 1st, 2020, TCM Women Make Film Day. As many of you know, Turner Classic Movies is my very favorite go-to cable network. As a film classic buff myself, um, I'm just so honored and pleased to be a part of this on their behalf and leading this recognition on behalf of the City Council. Turner Classic Movies is now in its 26th year as a leading authority in classic film. Uh, they've done a special invaluable service benefiting all women these past several months by honoring and championing women who make film. TCM's Women Make Film series seeks to shine a spotlight on the outstanding work of women filmmakers and their stories, many of which have typically gone untold throughout the golden age of Hollywood and beyond. For 14 consecutive weeks, which began on September 1st, and it ends this evening, December 1st, several hours of TCM programming each Tuesday evening have been devoted to a dazzling array of wondrous films directed by women. 100 films by 100 filmmakers from six continents and 44 countries spanning 12 decades and spoken in multiple languages. Plus, the premiering of a 14-part groundbreaking documentary, Women Make Film: A New Road Movie Through Cinema, which was written and directed by Mark Cousins. This special recognition is part of a larger virtual event that includes a conversation hosted by TCM's Alicia Malone with documentary director Mark Cousins and feature directors Juanuri Kahyu and Kristen Johnson. Uh, you can watch the virtual ceremony and filmmaker discussion by tuning into TCM via your local cable provider or on the City's Channel 35 tonight at 8:00 p.m. Therefore, the City of Los Angeles celebrates TCM's Women Make Film for enriching our understanding of our civilization's ongoing legacy of film by daringly, caringly, and devotedly gifting us with an extraordinary variety of magnificent movies, teaching us about the glorious history of women who make film from a woman's perspective, which is like experiencing a film in a, in a different way, uh, that has been traditionally underserved. Therefore, be it resolved that today, Tuesday, December 1st, 2020, is TCM Women Make Film Day in the City of Los Angeles, and I look very forward to welcoming TCM back to Hollywood, if not for 2021, their festival, their film festival, then certainly by 2022. Uh, and with that, colleagues, we honor TCM Women Make Film Day today. Thank you.
Any other announcements, um, members? Mr. Buscano, do you have an announcement?
Adjourning motion.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Rodriguez, you want to go ahead? Adjourning motions?
Yes, uh, Madam President, and I know, uh, Mr. Krikorian would also be sad to know that, uh, I understand that Sue Bartlet, um, has died this morning. Uh, you know, Sue was just an incredible partner in our community, working with the Sun Valley, uh, efforts to combat graffiti and blight in our communities. Um, she was an incredible woman who, I know, struggled with health issues for some time, but I was just informed this morning of her passing, and, um, I, I wanted to ask that we adjourn in her memory. I know we honored her recently upon her retirement. Um, she was just, you know, she was a great friend. She was deeply committed to serving the community, found ways to provide service even when funding didn't necessarily cover it. Um, incredibly resourceful, but just, this is another devastating loss when I think about, uh, what our shared communities have experienced in the loss of leaders like Cindy Sauer, um, in her premature loss of life, and now Sue Bartlet. Um, these are individuals that have been paragons in our community. They've just been, uh, just, you know, just a source of strength for so many, and, uh, I was just devastated to learn of her loss and wanted to, uh, ask that we all adjourn in her memory.
Ms. Rodriguez, I'm really sad to hear about that. I know that Sue and I had spoken a couple of months ago. She was, um, definitely facing some real health challenges, um, and was just devastated at the fact that, you know, most of her efforts, she was so worried about who would continue her legacy. I know the community of Sun Valley has just an enormous sense of gratitude for her commitment to ensuring the quality of life for those of us who live there, and was a warrior and just a fighter every single day for those resources to be able to, uh, clean up and do what she could just to restore, you know, the pride of, of the Northeast San Fernando Valley. She was not only an amazing woman, but just a tremendous friend, and I had no idea she'd passed away this morning, so thank you very much. Mr. Krikorian, I want to let you, um, say a few words as well, because you and I have both known, um, Sue for a very long time, and both of you, you and I both represent the community of Sun Valley, so would you like to say a few words?
I would. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Obviously devastating news. Um, uh, when we honored Sue in council, uh, a while back, um, we knew this day would come, of course, eventually, but still, um, hearing the news is, um, it's a, uh, it's obviously, um, terrible, terrible news for our part of the valley, terrible news for everybody who, uh, cares about improving neighborhoods, um, because I think Sue was maybe one of the best examples of, um, the can-do attitude that makes all the difference in, uh, communities across our city. We're a city of 4 million people, uh, a whole variety of different neighborhoods, uh, throughout our city, and the vast majority of people in this city look around and see things that they don't like, and they complain about it. They, you know, maybe post something on social media about it because they're mad. Um, Sue was mad a lot, and, um, what she did, instead of complaining, instead of posting about it, uh, she organized other people to join her, and she went out into the streets and into the alleys and into the medians and into places in Sun Valley that had been neglected, uh, for years, and she transformed them. And while she was transforming those neighborhoods, she was transforming lives, because the young men and women who worked with her, um, were people who were empowered by her to make a difference, a positive difference. Uh, and many of them have gone on, you know, after her mentorship, uh, to continue to do this work in, with other community service organizations as, as well. Um, it, it's very sad to lose Sue. She was a great friend, a great partner, um, but I think anybody who goes to the Northeast Valley, um, will really see the legacy of Sue for a very long time to come. They'll see it in the neighborhoods, they'll see it in the, uh, the mural that you all can see off the 170 freeway, the large, uh, vintage North Hollywood mural that my office did with Sue and with the Neighborhood Council and others, but, but it was, you know, largely due to Sue's work, that that went from being a blighted, horrible eyesore, uh, to a beautiful piece of public art. And so there are countless legacies like that of Sue Bartlet all over our three districts, and, um, she will be missed, uh, but she'll also always be remembered for how much she gave to our city and to our community. Uh, may she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Very well said. You know, Sue did not know district boundaries. I think she just saw one big community and she just went at it. I know her and Cindy are probably raising havoc in heaven and probably making things happen because they're just, they were, they were that type of women, and you just don't make them like that anymore. So, um, she's gonna be sorely missed. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, for, for bringing this to us. I'd like to adjourn, um, um, this meeting in her memory as well with all members, um, signing onto the adjournment. So thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Buscano?
Thank you. Um, yeah, this is a sad loss. Sending our love, um, to Sue and the family. Um, colleagues, yesterday I had a chance, and as I often do, connect with, um, our, our dear colleague, former colleague, Tom Labonge, and he shared with me that he lost his brother Stephen recently, and I would like to adjourn in memory of Stephen Labonge, Tom's brother, and one of eight brothers in, in his family. Uh, Stephen Labonge had a successful career selling heavy equipment highway trucks. He was filled with passion and adventure and a warmth of life, and he always saw the best in people. Um, but Tom told me most of all, uh, Stephen loved his family. He was kind and generous to everyone who was in his life. He was a great photographer. Uh, Stephen joined, enjoyed his retirement years at Glen Park Mariposa near his childhood home. He developed many close relationships with fellow residents as well as great staff there. After a valiant fight against Alzheimer's disease, um, Steve passed away on October 2nd. As a final act of generosity, uh, he donated his brain to USC KEF, uh, for research into this, this horrible disease, and once again Stephen was thinking of others. He is survived by his son Stephen Jr. and his two wonderful young girls, Judith and Phoebe, and his six brothers, Brian, Dennis, Tim, Bob, Tom, and Mark. He will be greeted in heaven by his mother, Mary Louise, Father Bob, his brother Chris, and his dog, Misty. He will be dearly missed. May he rest in peace. Thank you, members.
Very sad to hear about that. Thank you, Mr. Buscano. Very sad to hear about that. Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Um, our, our thoughts and prayer go with the Labonge family. Thank you very much. Any other adjourning motions, members? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.